Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Next item on the agenda is Palmyra Pride. I'll turn it over to you, Dr. Keppler.
Thank you, Mr. Connell. Tonight, some unsung heroes, if you will, that we're recognizing under Palmyra Pride. I don't know how many of these staff members are able to join us online tonight. But start with our class advisors. Teachers at our high school level step up and serve as class advisors. They work with our student leaders in each grade level. They do a lot of fundraising, activities with students, and serve as advisors, basically, leading up to the junior year in a group that organizes prom. The students pay for that, in essence, for much of prom, through other fundraising, through ticket sales, et cetera. Senior year, they assist with some graduation-related activities, senior trip, things of that nature. So tonight, it gives me great pleasure to thank our freshman class advisor, Lisa Self-Smith, our sophomore class advisors, Mr. Carville Deener and Mrs. Becky Foege, our junior class advisors, Katie Heatherling, Josh Palonda, and Chris Plon, and our senior class advisor, Josh Fleming. To those teachers, thank you for going the extra mile for our students. And then also, secondarily, to our student council and homecoming advisors, Lauren Nattori and Cody Fickus. Again, thanking them for their hard work and determination. They work the student body. Dr. Richardson and I actually got to sit with the student council and brainstorm as the students talked about ideas for homecoming. And the homecoming that this group pulled off with their student leaders was probably one of the best homecomings I've seen in my nine years here. Over 800 students participating. And it was, the videos I saw were phenomenal. I was out of town, so I couldn't see it, but it was a, it looked, or I couldn't be there, but the videos I saw were outstanding. So Cody and Lauren, we thank you for your dedication to your students as well. And then I'll backtrack. For a group that I get the opportunity to join, our local Rotary Club. For those that don't know, the Rotary meets every Monday with their meetings and serves our community. And they, for years, have steadfastly honored our third-grade students by giving every student a hard copy dictionary. I know, having a wife that teaches third grade, our students look forward to that, and they hold those dictionaries near and dear and take great pride in them. Those are recently delivered to our schools this year already. And then also, our Rotary recognizes our High School Student of the Month. Each month, a student with their parents gets to go to a Rotary meeting, the Rotary treats them to a meal, and recognizes them for their achievements. And it's often a highlight of my, night of my month, as I join them that night the family's there. And they hear the resumes, if you will, and the aspirations of those High School Student of the Month is pretty, pretty awesome. It's honoring great students. So to our Palmyra Rotarians, thank you for supporting the school district and our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Okay, so we'll move on to the next item, which is President's Report, and I have nothing to report this evening. So we'll move on to visitor comments. As a reminder, you have five minutes to speak about your topic with about 4 minutes 20 seconds. I'll just give you an indication that your time is almost up, that's to wrap up. And then he will, I feel like, by five minutes. So with that, I will move on to our first visitor comment, which is registered for Mike Valley. The topic is investing in our schools and community. Mike, could you say aye for those on Zoom, so we can make sure we?
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Can you hear you? So Mike, you have the floor.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone. I appreciate the time to speak tonight, and I thank all of you for your service on the school board. And these past few months have been especially challenging, and I greatly appreciate and respect your willingness to serve in these roles and the importance of the work that you do. I'm here this evening in part to publicly thank the administrators, teachers, and staff for all the work they have done and continue to do during the pandemic. Dr. Kepler and everyone associated with our school district has been handed one difficult situation after another. They've been forced to make impossible choices that they knew could never possibly please everyone. Their commitment to our students and the community deserves our highest level of appreciation and respect. I want to take a moment to thank them publicly. While many, including this board, have also rightfully recognized their efforts, I believe it is critical that in the months and years ahead, that we thank them not just with our words, but by taking meaningful action to ensure we are adequately investing in our schools for this excellent work to continue. The quality of our schools directly impacts every individual citizen, whether you have a child currently enrolled or not. Excellence in our classrooms impacts the graduates who will be your neighbors. It enhances the sense of community and pride that comes from athletic and performing arts events. And most directly, for many, it has and will continue to significantly increase property values for individual homeowners and businesses. Palmyra is truly an amazing place to live, but that didn't happen by accident and is not guaranteed to continue unless we ensure our school district remains a top priority. As a licensed psychologist and nationally certified school psychologist involved in education, I am frustrated often by the knock-down, drag-out arguments over percentage points and needed funding increases. I greatly value fiscal responsibility, but instead of just ripping the Band-Aid off and ensuring our schools have enough resources, we too often squabble about whether we can squeak by without filling critical positions. Over the past few years, I have constantly heard the argument that school taxes just go up too consistently. Well, whether we like it or not, the reality is that the cost of everything tends to go up consistently as well. I guarantee you that if food, housing, energy, and vacations go up in cost, so does the cost of running a high-quality school system. Just recently, it was announced that anyone receiving social security will get a 5% increase in funding next year. 5%. But yet I hear arguments and campaign promises to freeze our school funding in the future. When the rest of the world is adjusting to increasing costs, how does that logically work without gutting our entire district? As a parent and community member, we literally entrust our children to spend over 1,000 hours a year within our schools. Think about what that adds up to and the impact it has on them over the course of their educational careers. Rather than cutting corners, isn't this an area we should demand that our goals be set the highest? We don't need to be, nor should we aspire to copy other districts. But it is challenging to see surrounding schools we are competing with and compared to, who have fewer students but literally millions more in educational resources. I am asking whoever sits on this board in the next cycle to think big picture. We need to be committed to investing in hiring the best and brightest teachers and administrators, developing their talents and skills, and ensuring they remain in the district over the long run. I would hope, as a school board, your goals would be not just to maintain what we have, but to advance the district forward and be competitive as leaders in critical areas like STEM, technology, and social-emotional learning initiatives. We need to recognize that investing in our schools is the smartest, most efficient, and impactful decision we can make as a community. To my fellow community members, if you are tuning into a school board meeting on a Thursday evening, I am guessing you understand the importance of the upcoming elections. We need to make sure our neighbors, friends, and anyone else who is eligible understands the issues, candidates, and the importance of what is on the line. I believe the majority of this community, regardless of political affiliation, agrees that it is the right decision to value and invest in our schools. But that only matters if the majority shows up. For any of our current or future board members who are listening, I encourage you to push Palmyra to continue to be a leader in education. There will always be noise, but make the choice to invest in our schools over the long term. There will never be resources that are better spent by a community. Thank you again for your time.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Mike. Moving on, Seth Kleinfelder. Seth, can you say hello? And the topic is board policies. We see Seth in the list.
Yeah, I need to tell us.
Seth, do you want to say aye?
Can you hear me?
Now I can hear you. Okay, Seth, you have the floor.
My name is Seth Kleinfelder, and I'm here to talk about board policies. And first, meetings being closed to the public. According to Pennsylvania Title 65, Chapter 7, Section 702B, the General Assembly hereby declares it to be the public policy of this Commonwealth to ensure the right of its citizens to have notice of and the right to attend all meetings of agencies at which any agency business is discussed or acted upon as provided in this chapter. It is important to keep in mind that Act 15 of 2020 is no longer in effect since the emergency was ended. Therefore, by holding these meetings by Zoom only, you are limiting the public's ability to attend the meetings. Therefore, I ask that this board, from this day forward, allow in-person attendance of all meetings. In Policy 006, under public participation and both, and under both, Board Committee of the whole workshop meetings and regular office board meeting, Item 1, in both of those locations, quote, "Agendas will be made available to the public via the district website the day prior to the meeting," end quote. Under Board Policy 903, quote, "The meeting agenda and all pertinent documents shall be distributed to the press and the public at the meetings," end quote. In addition, on June 30th, 2021, Governor Wolf signed into law Act 65 of 2021, which amends Pennsylvania Sunshine Act to require school district to publish a meeting agenda detailing issues expected to be deliberated and voted on at the meeting, at least 24 hours prior to the public meeting. Since Policy 006 already requires the superintendent to provide, quote, "the agenda together with all relevant reports," end quote, to the board members, I request that all of this information be published on the website with the agendas at least 24 hours prior to the meeting. In regards to Rule 903, which allows the board to interrupt or terminate a participant's statement when the statement is too lengthy, personally directed, abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. I want to point out that this policy may lead to First Amendment lawsuits. According to Justice William Brennan, who wrote for the Supreme Court in the celebrated libel law decision of 1964 in the case of New York Times Company versus Sullivan, quote, "Thus we consider this case against the background of a profound national commitment to the principle that debate on public issues should be uninhibited, robust, and wide open, and that it may well include vehement, caustic, and sometimes unpleasantly sharp attacks on government and public officials," end quote. In other words, the public may be nasty and mean when addressing you, and their comments may even contain personal attacks against you. This requirement of free speech may not be inhibited in the name of courtesy or politeness. And let us remember the words of President John F. Kennedy, quote, "Without debate, without criticism, no administration and no country can succeed, and no republic can survive," end quote. Next, in regards to recording. In addressing recordings of meetings, I would first like to say thank you for allowing, for following the current Pennsylvania law. I believe that all public meetings associated with any government in this country should be accessible to the public in as many ways as possible. There are many in our community that have responsibilities that prevent them from attending hours of meetings, even when they are broadcast over Zoom. In fact, by broadcasting the meetings over Zoom, when you allowed in-person meetings, the board recognized that these meetings should be available to the public. In addition, there are a number of channels such as YouTube, Rumble, and more that allow for free hosting of video. Therefore, I ask this board to approve a policy that will cause the recordings of all public school meetings to be made available on the internet and to advertise access to those meetings on the school website. Finally.
Hey, Seth, do you want to wrap it up? You're just about done.
Finally, I have some questions. Is the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee still meeting? Are those meetings public? If not, why not? If they are public, are the rules for public meetings, including posting the dates and agendas, on the website being followed? Thank you.
Seth? So I believe just a couple comments, so that the agendas are made available at 24 hours ahead of time.
That's correct.
They are listed on the website.
Mr. Kleinfelder, if you need assistance in finding where we post our agendas, please happy to talk to you tomorrow or next week to share where we post those, that they are on our website.
And I think the, the other ask that I had noted was about the associated documents and things of that nature. So I don't think we put all those out there 24 hours ahead of time, is that correct?
I don't believe all the attachments are posted, yes.
So we'll have to take that other consideration. I think the other item was DEI, the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. Just an update on there, since we've had so much board turnover and when Mr. Corfiant resigned, we did not reassign that to a board member because the board change will happen in December. So with the amount of people up for election, there could be a huge board shift, and at least doing that at this time didn't make too much sense. I don't know if you want to add?
I would just simply, to echo what Mr. Connell shared, that committee has been idle since that board change and awaiting the board reorganization in December to make any determinations as to where that committee is going in the future.
Okay. With that, we'll move on to Buildings and Grounds.
The Buildings and Grounds Committee last met on October 14th. During the meeting, we had a presentation from Greenworks Development Solar Energy on a proposal for a ground solar array at Ridge Road that would produce and cover 100% of the district's electricity needs, as well as a long-term financial plan that was presented in terms of the cost savings and energy credit, credits back to the district. Over the course of that, the board did authorize the administration to move forward and take next steps to fully develop a plan, get more information. A lot of conversations need to occur, and so the administration will be putting forth a plan to start the vetting and evaluation of that process. Proposed capital projects, Darcy reviewed with us the Capital Funds Report, the debt service schedule, as well as discussion around the availability of committed fund balance and making that available for capital projects. Heath Dresch proposed the purchase of a box truck to replace a very, very old current box truck that's in use for many purposes, food service, delivery van trips, football trips, and using that out of fund reserves that had been committed for vehicle replacement. The board authorized Mr. Dresch to go collect more information and look at getting us some specific dollar costs on the replacement of that vehicle. The board reviewed the Matatorium Study, the pool study, because some of us just like to follow it much easier. And a timeline for that, the administration will be providing a report on pool usage and fine-tuning its recommended timeline. I believe board members, we did receive an email this week with that, with that usage information. The board also received three proposals for engineering services to prepare specs for Northside Elementary and Middle School parking lot renovation and paving. The board directed Mr. Dresch to obtain some more specifics and get us a little bit more apples-to-apples comparison on the scope of services and requirements within those proposals. Wow, used to, used to have a public comment. The board was provided an update on the completion of reinstallation of the brickwork at the middle school, which was much, much prettier than in the past. There was no public comment, and the meeting adjourned at 8:15 PM. At this time, we do not have any motions coming out of committee. So the next meeting of Buildings and Grounds will be scheduled for Thursday, November 11th, immediately following the 6:00 PM board meeting in the district office boardroom and via Zoom for the public.
Thank you, Ms. Pryzer. So we'll move on to finance, Ms. Fisher.
Thank you. The Finance Committee last met on October 14th. And during that time, Darcy Brecker-Smith provided the board with a review of the 2022-2023 budget timelines. There was no public comment in the meeting adjourned at 8:20 PM. We do not have any motions from that meeting. So the next meeting of the Finance Committee is scheduled for Thursday, November 11th, after the Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting in the district office boardroom and via Zoom for the public.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Fisher. We'll move on to Staffing and Administration, and Mr. Putz is going to take this this week.
Can I read it like Larry? Maybe like, maybe get it off the screen and focus my glasses. The Staffing and Administration Committee last met on October 14th. During the meeting, we discussed, the board, I'm sorry, approved the list of field trips in preparation for the motion tonight for the Disney trip. The bocce ball team, Carolyn Richards and Brian Wyler, provided the board with a presentation on the development of Palmyra Unified Indoor Bocce Ball Team as a part of the Unified Champion School Program in preparation for a motion this evening. There was board consensus for the PSBA officers to ask follows: Serena Backer from Franklin Area District, the Forum Steering Committee, which term ends December 31st, 2023, of Jennifer Davidson, Mannheim, Deanna Lascensi, Lascensi, Palisades, Jamie Lynn Zermansky from Schubel. There was no public comment, and the meeting adjourned at 8:40. From that, I have the following motions. I'd like to make a motion that pursuant to Section 1073 of the Public School Code, the school, I'm sorry, Board of School Directors of the Palmyra Area School District hereby notifies Dr. Annette Spagnolo that intends to retain her for an additional four-year term as Assistant Superintendent beginning on July 1st, 2022, and ending on July 30th, 2026. It's a roll call vote.
So I have a motion that pursuant to Section 1073 of the Public School Code, the Board of School Directors of Palmyra Area School District hereby notifies Dr. Annette Spagnolo that it intends to retain her for an additional four-year term as Assistant Superintendent beginning on July 1st, 2022, and ending on July 30th, 2026. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Hudson. Any questions, comments, or concerns?
Just to clarify, it's June 30th of 2026, is the contract.
June 30th, 2026.
I believe the motion was read as July 30th by both.
Oh, okay. So just to make sure, it's July 1st, 2022, and ending on June 30th, 2026. Okay, I didn't even pick that up. Any other questions, comments, or concerns? So hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote, and Darcy, who we got to start with?
Ms. Hudson? Yes. Pryzer?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Connell?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Yelle again?
Yes.
Okay, by a vote of 7-4 and none against, motion carries.
Thank you. Just happy that we also, yeah, that Larry lives on. So I'm going to like to make a motion to approve the Staffing and Administration Committee items as noted on the Staffing and Administration Consent Agenda.
Take you through some items, some hiring for our business department, the replacement of our Director of Business Affairs upon her retirement. That was listed there. Thank you to the board members who participated in that interview process. Assistant Director Tanya White. Professional staff long-term substitutes you see there in elementary health and PE. An extension of what was recently a short-term substitute position becoming long-term in item 3B. Associated mentors for long-term substitutes under school code. Support staff new hire. We welcome a new instructional aid at Pine Street. Some additional substitute teachers. Winter coaches in our wrestling program are before you this evening. Volunteer hires to work with our boys lacrosse program and our wrestling program. The approval of the aforementioned Unified Bocce Team and the High School Music Trip to Disney is before you tonight as well.
Okay, any, so I have a motion to approve Staffing and Administration, any items as noted on the Staffing and Administration Consent Agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Pryzer. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
The next meeting of the Staffing and Administration Committee is scheduled for tonight, after the Curriculum Committee meeting in the district office and the DSA for the public.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Putz. So we'll move on to reports, and we'll start out with the superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Connell. A short report tonight, sharing, I just talked about our Rotary Student of the Month. And our Rotary, the Middle School Student of the Month for September 2021 is Alana McGow. Alana was selected by middle school teachers as an outstanding student who consistently exhibits the pride at roles and serves as a role model in our school. Criteria for selection included scholarship, leadership, participation, and extracurricular activities, and service to the school and the Palmyra community. And I had the pleasure to join Miss Ashley Newman and her parents, Taryn and Becky, as our September Rotary Student of the Month at the first Rotary meeting here the last week. And again, just accolade, you know, Ashley talked about her aspirations of becoming a doctor and talked about schools, and it's, it's one of the joys I have of living and working in the same community. I've gotten to see Ashley grow up from a young elementary student now to a high school senior. So congratulations to Ashley and also to Alana. Other, the second of four stakeholder meetings for our development of our district's comprehensive plan was held last Tuesday, October 12th. Nearly 40 community stakeholders attended. We spent the night finalizing the Palmyra Area School District mission statement. This committee is going to bring to you, the board, a recommended change in our actual mission statement. And, and then the, also the vision statement and shared values that go behind that. So I look forward to bringing that to you in upcoming meetings. And we're also, the group started beginning development of goal areas. 30,000-foot level goals is where we're at as a committee. We meet again here in early November for our third session. Mr. Foege was happy to share with me, Palmyra Area Middle School was recently recognized in the U.S. News and World Report Best Middle Schools in 2021. We were ranked as the number three middle school in Lancaster 11 and NYU 13, and the number 132 middle school in the Commonwealth, in the 939 total middle schools. So we're pretty much in the top 10%. So very pleased with that. On October 11th, 2021, Dr. Spagnolo and Building Administration worked with our professional staff through some curriculum work that I'll leave at that, because I know she's elaborating on that a bit in the Curriculum Committee to see and I share some upcoming events with you. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Good to hear about the middle school.
Absolutely.
It's, if I think about 12 years ago, the middle school was struggling, and it certainly has come a real long way. Has certainly become a real bright spot.
And so I'm very pleased with Mr. Foege and Mr. Rackley as a team there, and that entire staff. They're doing a bang-up job.
I don't want to make any extra work, but I mean, if Mr. Foege has anything of what the criteria was, I didn't, I might just go by the magazine. If he, if he has anything on that, he could send us. I really appreciate that. Just a matter of sticks.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the Student Rep Report. I don't know if we have the Student Rep on the conference.
Yeah, I'm here. Hi, I'm Jordan Taylor. I'm the president of Student Council at PHS. And just to report, we had, as Dr. Kepler said earlier, an amazing homecoming, over 800 students. Everyone had an amazing time, and it was really successful given the current circumstances of our school. And right now, we're just working on getting a can drive together for the can cupboard and just some group bonding activities to reward student council for such an amazing job that we did with homecoming.
Jordan, this is Dr. Kepler. I'll jump in and just add to your story as a student council and as president that represents our student body. I am incredibly, I don't know what the right word is, but proud of the involvement that I see in our student body. In my nine years in the district, this is the most involved student body I've seen. The week of activities during homecoming, the participation rates far exceeded what I've ever seen before. So to you as the leader of our student council and student body, please share that message that our student So to you as the leader of our student council and student body, please share that message that our student body is a bright spot and we appreciate your leadership.
I absolutely will. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jordan. We'll move on to C T C.
Thank you, Mr. President. The C T C is moving our health careers, technology and sports therapy sciences from full-time programs to half-day programs. It's going to be a two-year half-day program, juniors A M, seniors B A. We just quoted on that last evening. We have a new chiller going in that's being paid for by years money. The. The second year in a row, we are giving the district five skills USA. And we did that last year. It's very successful and we hope to have another one this year.
Thank you. Next item is red commission.
Red commission just met last night. As I mentioned to you, Dr. Kepler. Lot of, lot of typical business in the world financially. But I think the board would very much appreciate some detail, maybe some of the things from the actual presentation that's public record from. From the meeting that could be shared with, with their chair and Tina. I think it'll go a long way. I'm sure they'll be reaching out that communication as well.
Absolutely. We've had communication with Tina regarding that in advance of our meeting, giving a heads up that we were even exploring that topic. Also communicated with them regarding the follow-up. They've provided us with a list of questions. We're putting together the answers for those in preparation for an upcoming.
Sure, thank you.
IU thirteen, which is Auisia, and she's not here. I don't know if anyone else has. Cougar Foundation?
Cougar Foundation, that Tuesday night, so Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, been a great week. Review three grant proposals. Or two and one for, there was another one for a follow-up, correct? So. Otherwise, good treacherous reports, really solid numbers coming in for the sponsorships and things that come in through the other foundation on the athletic complex. Really, really solid numbers on that. Exploring some further things around, trying to do a little catch-up on some fundraising overall. Due to, you know, COVID, there was no daddy-daughter dance for quite a bit here, no mother-son dance. And I think the president or chair, Mr. Mahappy, did a great job with the signs that that brought in quite a bit of money. So thank you to the community on that. That was. Unexpected and really necessary with, you know, a lot of the setbacks on the fundraising, but. Looking to get the dates nailed down for these things and we're looking to schedule here and get back into some of these awesome traditional events that the, that the foundation has had.
So that I'll even give an update to that, Mr. President. The foundation executive committee knows looking tentatively at May fourteenth, rain day, May fifteenth, two thousand twenty two. For a combined mother-son father-daughter dance held following our student council. At the O A L complex outdoors.
Hey, thank you. So we'll move on to the library report and Larry's not here this evening, so tax calls.
There was nothing in meetings since I asked for.
Okay, legislative region report.
Hope y'all can hear me. The P A lawmakers approved a school transparency bill. State lawmakers approved a school transparency bill that would require schools across the Commonwealth to make their curriculum. Public, available online. The House Bill one three three two heads to the Senate after passing. One ten to eighty-nine, the bill is being met by heavy backlash from teachers who. Say it is an attack on them. And the only thing else I had is to remember everyone to go vote on November second. And that's my birthday, so please go vote. Thank you.
Thanks. In advance, happy birthday. I won't see you.
Oh, thank you.
All right, next item is diversity, equity, inclusion, and that committee is on hold. So we'll move on to any other reports. Communications.
I'm just one communication there from four diamonds for you to read. Basically, a thank you and support and what the district's done over the years to help four guns.
Next item is adjournment. So at this time I entertain a motion to adjourn. So. By Putt. Second by Pryser. Any questions, comments or concerns? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're adjourned. So we'll move it to curriculum.
Thank you.
Recording stopped.
I have a motion as my first thing. It looks like. It's like we were talking about the seventh grade outdoor education. But it's written as a motion, not just what the motion.
That's what, yeah, it's what the motion will be.
Yeah, it doesn't say motion, so.
Yeah, just recommend to approve. All right, yeah, sure. Okay.
We're back on schedule, seventh grade, two trips.
Recording in progress.
May twenty twenty two, budgeted within our district budget and excited to have a quote-unquote more normal.
Recording stopped.
Outdoor experience, the full, the full version. So that would be before you on about November eleventh.
And just as a reminder, as we move through the next topic, if you have a comment that you want to make based on the agenda for the curriculum committee. Be sure to raise your hand.
Thank you, Mr. Connel. Next up is Veterans Day activities.
Yes, thank you very much. I am happy to share. That we have plans in place for our November eleventh Veterans Day. Each level has come together with administration and the department chairs to create some days. A day of memorable experiences. Our high school teachers are going to host veterans to serve as a panel. There'll be two sessions held in auditorium for our teachers and students. All social studies classes will attend. And, and others will attend if schedule permits. They're going to brainstorm the questions ahead of time. For the panelists, we will provide a luncheon and then our hope is just to, for our students to have a better understanding of what it means to be a veteran. Our middle school is going to present two thirty-minute assemblies for Veterans Day, including a video, our guest speaker, our very own Mr. Ryan Patrick. And we will recognize our Palmyra area middle school veterans and there'll be a musical performance from our band orchestra and chorus. In the individual classes, each grade level has activities that they will be doing. In their social studies classes to get more involved in what Veterans Day. The one documentary we stand together or we stand alone together, The Band of Brothers, is a documentary of the paratroopers from the second. Battalion five oh six parachute infantry and it's very. It's very interesting when, if you read the whole two hour or watch the whole two hour, but there is like little segments that they're going to be sharing with actually men. That were in the infantry. So that's very exciting. At the elementary level, our teachers are all going to read the story, The White Tablecloth. And then at lunch, we are going to have a white tablecloth with different items on the tablecloth that represents different things. A small table to represent the soldier's lonely battle, tablecloth, the honor is the pure heart when he agreed. To serve the country, additional things, empty chair for missing soldiers. Black napkin for the sorrow of captivity and so forth. So our elementary students will get a little understanding of what it means of whatever veterans work for. So. That is what we have planned for November eleventh.
I'd just like to say one quick thing to thank you, Mr. Patrick, for being willing to come into our school. It's been very important as board members for us. To also be leader spent to remain involved in the school district and we actually need something for that.
Yeah, you're welcome. And you know what I just have to say, Mr. Mahappy, I think this is incredible. You know, others have brought it up in the past, this year, you know, being able to do something. We have a lot of veterans in this community, a lot that are struggling. Just like so many others. So to recognize that and also to share, you know, hey, there's other options when you get out of school, when there's paths you can go. That, you know, hopefully we can, we can spread that message so that we can help others, you know, going forward too. So I really appreciate doing this and putting this together.
And this is Sue. My husband is actually having a meeting now at the Campbelltown Legion. I know he is looking forward to coming in and speaking and getting a couple more veterans from over there to come over. I'm hoping our one. He was, he is an ex-Navy SEAL. He was in Korea. He's a really great guy and I really hope he speaks because he's very interesting to listen to.
Thank you, Sue.
Yeah, thank you, Sue.
And you said it's the, the Band of Brothers, the five oh six.
Yes.
We actually drive over the Dickmayers Bridge every time you come and go from. Your, your, your.
Yeah.
East from Hershey.
So I, I, I have to tell you, I'm, I'm excited, right? Because this is what we envisioned of what Veterans Day should be. And I, I really can't wait to hear the feedback on how receptive that was. You know, we, as we get older, you know, a lot of the people, of course, from World War Two are not around anymore and Korean War. And as you know, everybody from Vietnam, you know, and personally you might know somebody, those people are getting so much older now. So it's really good to share or if those people could be available to share their experiences with kids and really understand. What our, our services provides for us, our freedom.
Absolutely. Now, we anticipate it to be a starting point, a great starting point and build on it from there in future years.
I kind of wish I could. I do because I, you know, this is something I wish they did when I was.
Certainly. Obviously, I know this is not your job as board members, but clearly you are welcome to join us that day any day, but understand you have full-time jobs, so.
Dr. Kepler and I will have to divide and conquer the difficulty because. Any video clips might be great to share.
Sure.
Or it's a great idea, a small presentation of all the different things going on that day.
Yeah, I think I'd just really like to hear how it went.
If you could video class, some video class could put something together for us.
Cougar News.
Cougar Media News, special edition.
There you go.
Reporter at all sites. It's a great idea.
Okay. Thanks. Next is the October overview part.
Okay, thank you. I just want to share that we had a entire day working with our curriculum. I want to clarify that this is not new curriculum. We're not adopting or bringing anything new to the board. But what we've had in the last few years is piecemeal where we've had our curriculum. So we are spending time. Placing it in this, a same spot so that. My goal is at the end of the year, I believe, as Sue, you mentioned with House Bill thirteen thirty-two. I firmly believe we should be posting our curriculum on the website. And so my goal is for the end of this year that every course that we have in the district will be posted on the website. And here's an example of what one will look like. This is algebra. One A, it will have a unit to study, the percentage of time for each unit, the big ideas that they'll learn in the unit. As well as the standards and anchors that we will be doing. So middle school, high schools, probably about ninety percent done right now. Elementary is a little more tricky because they, each teacher has to teach four subjects. So that's the one that's going to take me. Or take us a little bit longer, but I'm really hoping that by the end of the year, this will be a huge project that I'll, I'll be finishing. And then with our new website, we will be able to have a curriculum tab and then anybody that is moving into the district is interested in knowing what their child will be learning. Will have the opportunity to find it. So.
Awesome.
It's a huge project, especially with limited substitutes.
Is it going to be just the PDFs out there or is it going to be like some of the other districts, go over site, it's more searchable? Just, I think that's one of the questions that come out is, is just all documents that you got to filter through or is it going to be something?
I'll have the individual, I'll have elementary and then the grade level and under each grade level a PDF of each subject. So is that what you're asking?
We're going to have to consult with our tech team to make a little more.
Just to make it easy to navigate. That's one thing we hear, yeah, we don't want to make it look like it's hiding it. That it's easy to find and, and, and easy to understand.
I definitely will do it by grade level, K to eight, and then starting in high school, you take courses according to what path you're in. So it would have to be, it'll probably be your math courses, your social studies courses, your tech courses, things like that. So I think it will be very, but that's a good point. I can ask for community feedback. Before we roll it out to see what makes sense. And Dr. Newton is wonderful with our tech department, so I'm sure she can help bring some, some wonderful ideas. So, and this is, you know, I, I'm thanking all building administrators. They're a huge support with us as well. I couldn't do it alone. As well as our teacher leaders. We have some phenomenal teacher leaders that get corrected. So I'm very happy with this.
I don't want to get too far off topic, but this is where I think we have opportunities to be creative with our classes too. Right? It doesn't have to be the I T department that loads everything. We have a computer science, we have a STEM curriculum. Let them take the documents and figure out how to hyperlink them, how to make them all searchable and indexed and load it on the website. Those are, those are valuable skills to learn going forward. If they're in STEM and they're in the computer science courses, it's got to be part of what they're hoping to apply going forward. You know, let, let's give them that real world kind of opportunity and experience next week.
Yeah, yeah, in a safe place where they can, they have a lot of tooling.
That's a good point. I will definitely with that.
No, I mean, they have supervision. They have people watching over and they have a good chance to be able to participate in something like this, be able to. Work through it and, and gain that real world experience.
Two comments for me because of the template. If I do the math of adding up eight point three times your six topical areas, I don't get a very high percentage. And I see you have a footnote that says, please note percentages are just estimates, but as a parent, if I see only twenty-four percent of my kid's time is spent on things that are accessible. I think you might want to expand on some language there to describe what, what, what the seventy percent.
High school, I'm sorry, high school is very different because it's black schedule.
Yep.
So it's the percentage of time they had to put number of days and for high school, we're still working that. That, that's something we're aware of and we're working it out because.
Because as a parent and I try to add that up, I'm like, what are they doing the rest of the time?
Yeah, because we look at it, it's, it's a ninety day course. So if you, in our normal mind, we think hundred and eighty days.
Correct.
So when you take a ninety day course and there's certain, you have a Veterans Day program that might take time away. You have testing that takes time away. But you're right, those are the things that, as educators who know, the general parent may not know.
Yeah. And then the other thing I might suggest is, you know, the keystone anchors are statewide requirements. So maybe think about a hyperlink to that. Because if I want to understand how our curriculum relates to the statewide requirements, just a quick hyperlink that I can zap out and see what those anchors are.
Right from the words keystone anchors on the document, it's possible. It's a quick suggestion.
I'm not testing, so I appreciate this. I think you all have heard me say how, how much of an I am with test flights and standard process. This is great. And seeing something like this at every grade level for every content.
And again, teacher's curriculum is much more, much deeper and a great breadth. This is the overview document for our community to see what are the core principles we're teaching in each course.
And this is a behind the scenes. Our program that we're using is called C map and we purchased it through Warwick School District. So what we did is we met with them, Dr. Mahappy was a huge, she's a huge help with this as well. We met with them and said, this is what we want. And then they created the template. So the teachers go in and they have to fill out their units and their knows, understand the duties for each lesson. That turns into your big ideas and then the standards are attached. So we just all of a sudden just connect. So I will call Warwick. Tomorrow to say, hey, how about hyperlinks? Because that would be a great, a great addition to that. So thank you very much for sharing your ideas. If you think of other ideas that could make this better, please, you know, don't hesitate to reach out. But my goal is that definitely high school, middle school, we have, our, our last curriculum day is March for middle school and high school. Elementary doesn't have that day because they appear to conferences. So I definitely will have middle school and high school up, but my goal is really to have a K as well. That is all I have, Mr. Patrick.
Thank you, Dr. Spiegel. I don't see any public comment here, or no hands raised. So. With that.
Okay, very good. So we'll move on to our next committee, which is Staffing and Administration. So the one item. One item on there is Board Policies four zero zero six and nine oh three, and this is the second.
The only change from the previous meeting, I believe Mr. Kreiser had asked regarding the residents and residents or taxpayers. So you'll see an update, I'm just clarifying residents and or taxpayers. So just to clarify, a homeowner or a taxpayer in the district owns property but doesn't live here can certainly still speak on matters before this floor. So that's just a clarification and only ever change since, since the first reading.
And in Mr. Guy's analysis. To bring up for discussion, the suggestion of Policy nine zero three, and perhaps adding some comment that speaks to during public comment, the Palmyra area school district going to share a respectful, safe, and secure environment for all speakers without interruption as long as they meet all other policy requirements. Failure of attendees to abide by this deciding principle will immediately be removed from the meeting.
So Larry had emailed back to me, and he did mention in his accent that he spoke with you, Ms. Fisher, about speaking on his behalf. What he's suggesting is here, under item, making an item six, was his recommend, recommendation. Under regular official board meeting, add an item six.
Then it would get you copying in both policies if it's one under that section.
We might want to look at zero zero six and.
Because that's a copy from what?
That's correct.
It would be confusing, you know, again.
That's correct.
I'm not saying I'm for it, just saying if we do it that way, it should be in both.
I concur.
The other thought would be whether it goes under the presiding officer comment right after here, Policy nine oh three, which is where I think it really is addressing the actions of the presiding officer to interrupt or terminate statement for various reasons, request the individual to leave.
It's covered, in my opinion.
I think, I think Mr. Guy is looking for a little more structure around the May part of the policy some guidance that would come from the presiding officer. Senator May, the presiding officer, I think.
Or shall.
Shall. So I mean, Christian, I think Larry talked to me very, very briefly. I know he had a much deeper conversation. I think a lot of what he mentioned to me, I feel is addressed under that presiding officer, but his comment to me was not something that's so much discretionary as opposed to we will follow this policy. You know, use of obscene behavior being terminated, people not following the form of the rules, requirements of the meeting and facilities not being permitted, that's worth.
So your suggestion is that really changing May to shall? But that's basically putting the presiding officer, maybe do something that may not be beneficial for the difference.
Yeah. If you put it as a number six, it's still doing the same thing, though.
Well, right, but I mean, you know, again, at the end of the day, either your presiding officer is making the determination or they are not, right? So again, just being able to sit in a seat with experience and say, you're the person making the decision. You made the decision, and at the point in time that things happen, that you think is best for everything, right? That, that may or may not consider actually removal of somebody, requesting law enforcement, you know, calling a recess or whatever, right? That, that I think is, is the presiding officer who makes that decision. And when you put shall in there, and you're basically taking the will out of that, and then it really comes down to perception of whether somebody was, you know, meets the requirements to be removed from a meeting. I, I, I think the, the policy as it's written covers.
Including Mr. Guy's suggested additions to number six? Or are you speaking just about the suggested change to the, to these of the presiding office?
I think even, you know, what he's asking, I think it was said, failure of attendees to abide by this principle will immediately be removed from the meeting. Again, it's, it's either the presiding officer makes the decision or they don't. You're saying that doesn't come out, that who makes, and who makes the judgment call of whether somebody violated the policy?
There's still a subjective decision.
Correct. And that's the part I struggle with, right? This isn't, it isn't a black and white thing, right? It isn't left or right, it's, it's, it's something that you have to take all things into consideration and kind of make a decision at that point. I mean, I, I have no problems, you know, highlighting, I have no problem highlighting that, you know, if, if, if a person is disruptive or whatever meets the criteria here on the presiding officer, if you want to highlight that, if people can be removed from a meeting, I'm perfectly fine.
I think one of the, having just attended a, a session held by the Safety Director, IU thirteen, on effective and safe meetings, one of the suggestions that was provided is to provide a one-page overview of expectations in a public meeting that wouldn't require a policy change, but simply provides this at your public meetings, whether it's a handout, if the entry for, for our stakeholders that come to meetings, that provides, here's the expectations when you come in, and goes through those. So I'd turn that up to this board as a suggestion.
I mean, I mentioned that, I think a sign is nice too when you walk in. Like, you go into the Capitol Building, go public, there's a sign that says what you can and can't do as you're walking into the building. Even putting it right on the site isn't bad. This way, we didn't know, can't have banners. It clearly states it's a work of origin, people know ahead of time. And then, yeah, just trying to read that policy determinant, right? I think a one pager, even the building, put a sign out at the entrances when you're coming in, is a good idea.
I, I guess the, the decision point is, are there any changes that need to be made to this policy? If we want to hand stuff out or create a sign or whatever, that, that's equally, equally as good too. I, I don't know if that has to be noted in the policy.
Yeah, I mean, that's more procedural, I don't know.
If you would want to do what we said, my recommendation would be the very last line, which says the meeting agenda and all pertinent documents, including notice of decorum and requirements for attendance at meetings shall be distributed to the press and public every week. That's, I mean.
It's covered, yeah.
Yeah, I think everything you just talked about should be covered with, by changing that.
Do you mind saying that again, Mr. Chris?
The meeting agenda and all pertinent documents, including notice and disclaimer of rules and requirements for meeting attendance shall be distributed to the press and public every week.
And that will be communicated with Mr. Guy, that maybe he can phone friends and put together a draft of what we would propose that to look like. Someone now has to devise whatever it is we're going to hand out.
Sure.
He did it for us. I think he did it for a long time, and no one was ever taking it, and I think it just fell. So we already have one, I think it's our Friday. Yeah.
Predate my.
Yeah, no, it was.
It might not be.
No one took any of my files, yeah.
I would suggest the administration takes a crack at putting that document together based on policy and provide it to you to proceed with.
That's fair.
As the Chair of Staffing and Administration, I would request that you coordinate with Mr. Guy on that first and foremost before the rest.
Sure.
And, and Chris, I, I mean, I said what I said because I, I think other than one word, the rest of this really covers the tone and intent of everything Larry read. I, I don't disagree with, you know, at the end of the day, and I think it came across at the last meeting, where I said there's some deference that should be given to the president. We vote on who the president is based on our views of experience and responsibility, and I think that it's okay. I, I think just through this process, we're all a little more knowledgeable of policy and can have consultation with whoever the presiding officer is on thoughts, you know, prior to things where there's any question.
We will have all that for November eleventh and final formative.
Do we need to start, sorry, procedural question, do we need to start over again or changing the words? Or do we get to go to final readings since we all agree on?
It goes to final reading, yes.
That's why you have to read it. Okay, with that said, we have one hand raised, and this, that's Mr. Dave Waterhouse, so we enable him. Hey, Dave, you want to say hi, please?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah, you can, you have the floor.
Oh, great, thank you. So I had some questions tonight, you know, over the past year and a half or so, I've been pretty focused on the district finances and how that works and comes together. And with Darcy leaving, I see tonight we've hired Mr. Friends. And I wanted to get a sense of who he was. I was hoping you could explain a little bit about his resume, what made him stand out against other applicants, any ideas he had for, you know, improving the financial condition of the district. Just a little bit more about him to make the, the community comfortable with this kind of change. The district budget is approaching sixty million dollars, that's a lot of money. Most of that driven by taxpayer funds. And I just think people would like to get a good sense of who's going to be taking that over from Darcy, who has done a fantastic job. And as I said before, I firmly believe she's keeping the lights on this district, that it's, it's, you know, just the way the condition is. So it makes me a little nervous, the handoff, but I'd just like to be more comfortable with how we arrived with him and what you liked about him and his resume a little bit.
I could give a general overview, Mr. Lammock, and I'll certainly turn things over to some board members that participated in the interview process. But I would echo that nobody is more nervous about the transition than your superintendent, being the ultimate, having the ultimate responsibility of operations of this district. And I'll share with you my comfort level in Mr. Friends coming on board. An individual whose resume brings, I believe, eighteen years of public school business administration experience, with state auditing experience prior to that. So well-versed professional in school business over three different districts, coming to us with a background to transition effectively. We've set up a transition timeline where he'll have the opportunity to work beside Darcy before taking the reins. So talked about a lot of the things that we've done, healthcare, controlling cost measures, purchasing experience, trying to use the best of every dollar. I think to highlight a couple of the items experienced with working with facilities, maximizing facilities, capitalizing on revenue of facilities based on a recent experience in this career. So I'm, I'm pleased that we'll have an effective transition.
If I could just say one thing, I, I think also so that the public's aware, we consulted with Darcy on this, and we also got her opinion and direct feedback on whether this transition timeline was sufficient, her opinion, to convey the requisite knowledge and details. And she felt that this was comfortable, that she was comfortable and confident with it as well. I think in deference, the board felt very highly of that opinion and recommendation.
Great. And I don't think I was one of the interviewees. Erbs, I should say. And, you know, I, I, I thought, I thought he did a really good job explaining his experience. I think the experience that he brings to the table, he certainly has a good number of years under his belt in school systems, so that is, that is a key, one of the key things we really need to hone in on. And so with that experience, with the understanding of the area, and things of that nature, he, he was the best man. So Sue, I don't know if you want to add anything more on top of that.
I just found him very knowledgeable. I mean, every, every question that we threw out to him, I mean, he was bam 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 with answers. So I don't, I don't think we can fill Darcy's shoes, but I think he's going to, he's, he's going to fill them pretty well. So, yeah, I, I think as a public, we should, we should feel confident in him.
Okay, with that, I have no other hand raised. So our next item is executive session. So at this time, I'll close the committee. Sue, we will just separate and join, let's say, in five minutes. Her executive. Okay, thank you all.
Thank you, everybody.